Hello everyone, hello hello hello, my name is Dev Zorin. And welcome back to Tales of the Shire. Yeah, uh... I have to apologize that I haven't done the renovation thing even though I said... Uh, maybe I'll re- rearrange all the whole things when uh... We get some more of this space open like because there is nail doors over here which I think is actually the main entrance over there. And this also has a sealed door so maybe we will see renovation and I'm gonna do that on off camera when we are done. Wait for Assessor's response. Uh, um, yeah, so... Oh, oh, it's night. Okay, yeah. Oh, yeah, mm, yeah, I was doing little thumbnail. Thumbnail, uh, thing in a barb. I took a little thumbnails for the last video, that's why it's nighttime. I- I- I really wanted to, huh? What do we have? Oh, 18%. I think I need to do something. Uh, discovered new season, uh, near miscellaneous discovered, new fish, new fruit. Woo-hoo, dear meadwoods! It's Friday, the best day of the week! Yeah, cuz it's weekend almost, yes. So let's go. Why does my microphone want to be a douche? And also we have this. I need to go and talk to the carpenter over there. I totally forgot who, what was her name. But it seems we have mail. So the bird says, uh... Requesting my presence, opportunity, condition applied. I'm in need of a cure. Oh, yeah, let's take those. Didn't I took those already? Okay, oh cool. Let's see, I need a cure, in need of cure. Hello Hugo, sorry to ask but I got a bit of a sniffle. A cure would be very useful. Delphium might help. If you're busy... If you're busy, don't worry, it's just a thought. Oh, Fusco, I could do anything for you. You are much more better than the one who delivers these mails to me. Opportunity.
Hugo! Hugo! I've got an opportunity for you. I have some- something of a great value. But only my closest friends. Uh... But now wild stock lasts. Remember, Hudson's last bargainings are not available in any shops. Is this the guy who sells totally junk? Hmm? Request of- requesting your presence. Dear Hugo, oh god. Please come to the Ivy Bush. Ivy Bush in for a big village meeting? Uh, why is it... Make sure you use capital letters for that, Orllo!
Oh... Yeah, why didn't die? Yeah, it's Orllo, so, ugh.
Big village meeting! To hear the Shire Assessor judgment read out. But he- but there to hear that Baywater is a village. And to see Sandiman look like a complete fool. Get there early for a good view, ha ha ha! You'd better take out that... Take out that bit about Sandiman.
I- I don't think he took. Mr. Cotto, I don't think he took. Alrighty then, yeah, we got... Panel, I think I got that like last time. Ah, the early sunrise. Yep. So, let's deal with the... Let's deal with the thing about the... The medicine stuff. Ooh, my backpack is actually full. One moment, I'm gonna go and empty my backpack. Get in there, yeah, everything. There we go. God, I have so much stuff. So, actually, uh... Journal. Uh, Delphium's... Delphi's own cure. Let's- let's go meet Delphium. Oh yeah, uh, I think I already met Delphium. Oh hey, the sun is already up. So I'll see you all when I'm on Delphium's doorstep in the middle of the woods if I remember right. Yeet. Hey yes, here we are. Yeah, and I found some shrooms. I found cantaral. Which is actually... Well, I'm not a huge mushroom, uh, mushroom guy. Yeah, sorry, I don't like shrooms but... Here we are. See, she's over there, so I'm going in the right direction and not... Like doing that you do in Skyrim, you- Skyrim or any Elden Rings game. Elder Scrolls game, I don't know what Elden Rings, why- why would you do it on Elden Rings but... Uh, in Elder Scrolls games you- you just collect everything. Hey Delphi, I need your help. Can I help you at the end with something? Uh, help make cure Fusco sniffle. A sniffle? I know, just a thing. Or rather, my mother knew, just a thing. She was a great healer, you know? I asked once, "Are you magic?" Are you magic? No, that's, "Are you a mage?" Magician? A Taubara? Uh, what else? I would like to say it unfinished but then this- it would ruin... Ruin the whole video. Is that why you can cure everyone? That's- that sentence is gonna ruin my day. I was only little, uh-huh, sure. Just still little, you know, comparing to humans and elves. I told her then and he- then and there that I wanted to be a healer, just like her. She could cure anyone. She was famous for it, anyone but herself. Ooh. Uh, you alright Delphi? You- you alright there Delphi? Yes Hugo, I'm just a bit sad. Huh? Don't- don't! That- that is not a good thing to be. I'm just putting my phone on vibration so it doesn't do... Vvv. We should get- we should get this cure for Fusco. Fusco. Now, now, I remember that all we need is a herb. I can find that for you, herb which- which herb? Which herb, herb which? I'm not sure, why don't you collect three herbs, one of them will do the job for certain. Okay, so we're gonna poison Fusco it seems. Collect three herbs. Oh my god. Come on, let me jump down, you piece of poop. Uh... Train? Do you have herbs? Oh, parsley. Pepper was, uh, those are- those are spices. Those are not herbs. You are... You cheer. You, you, well... Well, at least I have you guys in the... You guys checking me out, walking around the woods and aimlessly and trying to find out herbs. Unless the editor just decides to cut you out. Like evil maniac that he is. Oh, hey, welcome back. I knew the editor would do something evil and shoot you away. Three farting stone. Where south farting, west farting, and east farting me- meet. N- no, no, Dev, no, it's not, no, not farting, yeah, and it's not the... Toot that comes out from people's butts. No, no, brain, no, don't go there. I'm sorry. I have visited all three. Which one did I like the most? Ah... I would say the new home. West farting, my new home. You get folks all kinds- all kinds here. From all the corners of the- of the Shire and beyond. Maybe because we are so close to the middle of the Shire. I've never been... Been to nothing fart. Never been to nothing fart, uh, yeah, it says the voice inside your head and be like, "Oh, hi." Yeah, sorry, my eyes tickling. Where Bun Bors took forth against the goblins. Perhaps I could vis- I should visit. Although, I hear it's quite cold up there. Oh, for love of god. Second thought, I had enough ventures for just moving here. Only ad- adventure I want now is a new meal. Or perhaps a new place to eat a meal. Oh... This could be a good place. This could be a pretty nice place to eat a meal, that could be a... Actually, yeah. Uh, like here, right here. The three farting stones are perfect for a meal with friends. I definitely need to start inviting friends here. Onwards with more good food. Wow. Uh, three farting stone unlocked. Okay. You can now decorate and host meals at the three farting stones. Able to hold a medium amount of attendees. Head- head to your writing desk and organize a shared meal at a new location. Yeah, not- not yet, not yet. So table completed. Oh hey, here's a table. This would be actually a pretty good place to hold... Hold a shared meal. But yeah, onwards with searching the herbs. Unless the editor is still doing the... Okay, we are finding some things, welcome back. Not yet found like... What herbs does she want, that's the question. Oh, there's still puffball over here. Yeah, I'm just finding all stuff around, I will... Oh my god, can't she just make a mushroom soup? I've got mushrooms for days really. Wait, does the bird actually want to help me? I know she's just... Pointing me to Delphi. Yeah, she- she was just pointing me over here. I really want those tomatoes, they look really, really good. I have the herbs, oh, I got them. Eh, you should have said that earlier. Thank you, I'll just make these up into some... Int cruise for Fusco. Int cruise. Int cruise. There we go. I'll ask Orllo to deliver it at once to cools. Once it cools, eh, and he's- and this will definitely work? Oh yes, probably. Could you check in on him later? I- that could, yeah, see if- if he's dead. Okay, uh, I'll see you guys when I'm at, uh, Fusco's home. Alright, here we are, near at Fusco's home. Those birds are not helping at all. Like, for reals. It was over here. You should not be working if you're sick, you know that. What can I do for you? How are you feeling? Delphium has asked me to check on you. Ah, the cure, the curse. The cures, curse, I think curse. I think it's a curse, not cure. No, it's cures. You know, I'm starting to feel better. But a bit of Delphi's medicine won't do me any harm. Let's see how this goes. Oh god, he's gonna explode. Oh my god. Ah, he's still alive. What have you done to me? Oh, whoops, perhaps it needs some time to work properly. The last thing it needs is more time, it's getting worse... The minute goes by. Achoo! I'm not getting better. Achoo! Go to Delphi and see if there's something she can do. Alright Fusco, oh god, achoo! Oh no, oh, okay, well this is turn enjoy adventure. I'll see you back at Delphi's. Alright, here we are, Delphium's tree. Delphi, you witch. It didn't work, it made things worse. Can I help you with something? Your medicine didn't work. Oh dear, he needs sour meal. Can you make one? Oh, goddammit. Yeah, sure. Get it cooked up as soon as possible and bring it straight back here. Okay, well, it's time to get cooking, I'll see you back at my home. And we are almost here, I need to get these shortcuts opened, dear god. Would make life much more easier, I need to visit... Willow was the person that I was actually thinking of, was Willow. Not that I accidentally ended up on her apartment over there, her small little apartment complex over there. Their- their- their throes are not easy. Okay, so, sour meal. Uh, let's take all the sour, salty, bitter, sweet. Uh, blackberry. Uh... Think we're gonna need some potatoes also, or... Actually, I have a sour meal already. Ah... Ah, god! Oh god! Where do I restore... Wood? I need another chest it seems. So where was my sour meal? Spicy, well balanced. And sour meal. Yeah. Good thing I was prepared. I'll see you back at Delphi's. Don't go anywhere. Editor, don't be such an evil thing and... Don't be such an... I said don't be such a... Alright, here we are. I hope editor didn't tease you that much. He- he is- he is kind of a dick. There we go. I have a sour meal. And also you need wood, I have some wood. Excellent, this will definitely do the trick. You sure? Sure as I can be. Ohhh, I don't know about that. Did your mother write down any cures? She left me a beautiful book. But the ink is all faded now, like... It's like I'm forgetting her, oh god. Just like I can't remember her face anymore. Uh, I know you're doing your best. And Fusco will understand. You're kind, you're very kind Hugo, yes, I know. I'll get this meal to him. Can you check on him later? Yeah, I think it's gonna get... It's evening, so I think we will soon need to go bed, I'll see you if I can... I'll see you at Fusco. Yeah, I found a package. Your favorite cousin at Pachelburg. Just who could this belong to? Oh, yeah, that- that is actually a thing that we need to worry about. Not yet, I mean. I'll see you at Fusco, I hope he's still at work. On his place. Alright, here we are. Asco- Asco, you're still here? Of course he's not. Yep, they all went to home. Yep, they're all gone, it's late. Dammit. Well, strive back tomorrow, I'll see you at the morning. I'm here, guess who forgot to water his plants? A little night water, it doesn't do bad. I totally forgot about- forgot about my plants, uh, I'm a bad plant owner. Let's refill this. And now, we're gonna get some sleepy sleeps and I'll see you guys in the morning. Nah, I'm not gonna cut this, editor, don't cut this away. And I mean it. I really need to. A new fruit, was that the... I found some fruits actually. It's funny when you're adventuring along Baywater, you find different things. Is actually, it is a little bit weird. Okay, anything prepared? Nope, but you guys need water. Now I'm gonna be a good gardener and... Help you guys with this. Oh soon, I'm gonna have so much lovely veggies. Let's go and see if Fusco's alright. And also I should actually buy more seeds. Yeah, I'll see you when I'm on Fusco's home. Oh, oh god, no, I didn't mean to go over here, ah! Okay, let's have the talk. Yeah, Fusco is over here! Okay, what's it all about, Cotto?
I would- I would just like to say how glad I am to see you all, see all of you. Now, I don't want to make a big speech. That makes a... That makes a change. I would like to say how glad I am to see most of you.
Get on with it, oh, get on with it, Cotto, the fish will... Oh, old hoax, yeah, totally wrong voice. Get on with it! Get on with it, Cotto, the fish will have to die an old age by the time you finish. That's not very nice of you, Mr. Nukes. And I rather... I would rather the fish did die of an old age, thank you very much.
Some people should mind their own business.
Le- let's not get any arguing. We're supposed to- to- supposed to come... Supposed to be coming together as one village. It's not going well, is it?
Do- do- do you- do you know what will make you feel happier? Buying things! I have some excellent bargains with me today! Really? What? Really, what you got?
No, you don't. You don't, Cotto. We have- we got enough of Hobson's treasures cluttering up- up the farm as it is. Should we hear Orllo's announcement? We should just give up. Should we- should we hear all those announcements?
Well said Hobbit. We want to know once and for all if Baywater is officially a village.
We have taken matters to the very top, to the Shire Assessor at my... At Michel Delving. I almost said Michael Delving, that would have been a worst action actor ever.
He knows everything about being a village, and he has given it his careful consideration. There are none wiser than he. I highly doubt that. Orllo! Announce the findings of an- of the official assessor, please.
Oh but it's not a village!
What?
Baywater is not a village!
I heard you the first time, show me that letter.
But you can't read!
Then show it to someone who can, the assessor is blitering idiot.
You said we are- we were none the wise- there was none wiser than him.
There's been terrible mistake. No, no there wasn't. The only mistake around here Cotton is that you thought you could get one up on me. I'm going back to my mill, Hobington Mill. Some- some of us have work to do.
Oh, poor Po. Cottons and Sandymans have never seen eye to eye.
This isn't personal, well, it is a bit. But more important, it's about Baywater. It's where we live!
We would love this place ever... We've loved this place ever since we were children. Its words, its dreams, our other half. I'm just switching between voices.
And we want it to be our home too, your home too Hugo.
Why, hey, what? That book of rules tells us that things be... Things a place needs to be called a village. If we don't do anything the rule says, the assessor will change his mind. If we do everything else, bleh bleh bleh, English, goddammit. I hope he will. We need to get him to come here in person and see for himself.
Agreed. So what's the rule, what's in the rules Nora?
We need to set up some clubs so hobbits can learn new skills. I agree with poisoning club so I can get rid of Orllo.
Easily done, let's get started. Yay, poison club! Yeah, let's get rid of Orllo, get a real mailman!
Hold on, we need to hang a wolf's head over our village gate.
Why? What?
There's been no wolves in the Shire for years. There's no wolf's head as you walk into Hobington, there's just the Sandymans in. Sandiman's ugly enough to scare anyone, anything else? Yes, if you see a goblin, you must report it to the king. You- you're saying that you need to walk all the way to Gondor? Or does Hobbits actually have king? Hmm, I don't know. Goblins in Baywater? Since when we- when there have been goblins in Baywater?
I can't say I've seen a king around here lately either.
Uh, these rules might be a bit outdated. They're always... They're all we have Willow. We can't make- make a start of these clubs, but we need some hobbitsons to run them. Whatever we do, we'll make it work.
Don't be, oh, you're not good enough. Oh, shut up, good enough. That's the spirit hobbits, let's work together. And do what we- what needs to be done to make Baywater a village. Which it is already. Very small one. Hey Fusco! You're still alive it seems cuz you were in- in this meeting, Fusco, ah! You feeling any better? Fusco! Where are thee? I need to see you, that you are living and kicking! Ah, over there, let's go over here.
It's not a maze, it's just... There we go. I am totally sorry that I made... I'm trying to sound like a voice actor even though I'm not. I just like to have different personalities with these people. What can I do for ya? You feeling any better? Think I sneezed every bit of the snuffle out of myself. So by making you sneeze so much, Delphi's cure what? In an unconventional way, perhaps it did. And I haven't eaten the meal yet, oh no. I'll tell her, she needs- she needs to cheer up. Is she sad? Is she sad? Well... Yes, well, I can understand that. Surely the accent changed. Don't worry about it Hugo, I will go and see Delphi right away. And I'll thank her myself. But first, I need to thank you for two reasons. Firstly, for being a skilled healer's assistant. And what's the second reason? Bringing me tonight's dinner. I'm rather partial to good sour meal. Ah, I know that. Hey, thanks for giving me twenty gill, or hobbiton coins. So... Let's see, journal. I said journal. Oh, ooh, it's 48%, okay. Uh, so... Way to hear back from the village campaign, ooh. Ask Hobson about the letter. Find the owner, package's owner, yeah, we've- I found a package on the road. So that's a thing. Ah, bless my bargains here. I got you a letter. You said you were- there was a bargain only for me. Did I say it was that? Did I say what it was? You said it was once in a lifetime opportunity. Can you narrate down a bit more? How many once in a lifetime opportunities do you have? Lots! Can I shoot this guy? So what's the big offer?
Not so loud Hugo, good enough. They must ask you to control your excitement.
Oh, try to look, I'm so excited. You- you see this? Yeah. I'm excited. You might cry out of joy but try to contain yourself. I want to push this man on that river over there and let him just flow away. I want to push this man on that river over there and let him just flow away up to somewhere else. Behold! It's a fork. Exactly. Crafted by dwarves. Crafted by the dwarves in their minds deep below the ground. Looks like quite ordinary for only to me.
Exactly. That's what's so good about it.
No, thank you. There was only no, no, nada. This is just a part, a complete dwarven dining set. Knives, forks, spoons. Let's try next year. Perhaps next year. Teaspoons, desert spo-, desert spoons, more spoons. I'll call an, I'll call the sheriff. The sheriff. We haven't got one, damn it. For absolutely low price, for one silver penny a week, you will, over time, build up a collection of that, collection of cult trade that will amaze and astound your friends. And who can't afford one silver penny a week? It's a steal. Goodbye, Hobson.
Wait, wait, my friend. You misunderstood me. You misunderstood me. I didn't want to, want you to buy anything. Oh, god. It very much sounded like you did. I know that as a hobbit living on their own, you have no need for such wide range of enchantingly mismatching culture. No, these are bigger families here, but urgent business beyond Baywater summons me. I cannot tarry. I'm asking you to sell these on my behalf. Oh, no. You know the hobbits here? They trust you. I trust you. We all trust you. No. So don't deny those hardworking families for opportunity of a lifetime.
I, I, I am gonna take a piece of rope, put it on his neck, and put that other, other side of the rope into a cart that has a very fast horse, smack that horse in the butt, and just let him yank this guy's head off. What if they don't want to buy it? Then sadly, the opportunity will pass, pass then by. As an old saying goes, you can bring a hobbit to a crossroad, but you, you can bring a hobbit to a crossroad, but you cannot make the, then boil a kettle without an... What? This guy's insane. Ye- Yeah, my, my words are exactly. Pardon? Excuse me?
Something like that. Good luck, Hugo Good Enough. May fortune follow you.
Oh, well, first Sandymann first. He got pennies spilling out of his ears. Falling that, failing that find Farmer Cotto. But make sure his wife isn't around. Then, well. Oh, for shish. Hey, you also had something else. Got anything for sale?
Well, bless my pockets, it's Hugo. I'm so glad to see you.
Oh, no. You hurt my feelings, Hugo. Yeah, that was intention. I have something very special. Behold! It's a box of old pins, Hobson. As sharp as a dragon's claw, but as light as feathers. How much? Seeing it is you, a special friend, and it's my mid-season discount sale day. Five silver peas, that's not a, no. Four and a half? Nope. Three? No. One? I'm in a bit of despair. Desperate, Hugo. Lily Cottons told Farmer, Lily Cottons told Farmer Cotton he can't buy anything else from me until next season. He is my best customer. Where, where am I gonna find another? Telling the, are you telling the truth, Hobson? Not so loud. I've got my reputation to think of. What do you, why, what have you got to sell? Nothing but, nothing anybody wants. Just some old door hinges. Why don't you talk to Willow? Willow took. She might need some hinges. I don't know. Willow took scares me a bit. Oh, she's nice. She is nice. Willow's nice. But she doesn't like fools or false hobbits. And that's why she scares me. If you tell her the truth, she will probably buy those hinges. Are they good quality? Quality. These hinges are hand-forged by dwarves of the Lonely Mountain. And you were doing so well, Hobson. You want more bargains? Of course you do. Goodbye.
Well, dearest Hugo, come back soon.
Oh, for love of god. We, can we just kick him out? So what do we need to do now? Ah, Hobson's investment. Sandymann, where is Sandymann? Well, actually... Where is Sandymann, to be honest? Oh, over there. Buy and sell to Sandymann. I hope that, I'm just, I'll, I'll, I hope that I can actually just say, Sandymann, that please take these things off from me because I don't want to have anything to do with these because these are just some rusty old thing and ababs. Oh, hey, Sandymann.
What is it?
I've got an offer for you, Sandymann. Hello, Mr. Sandymann. I got an au-, you got a family, haven't you? I ha-, have a joy of a son, yes? Where is he now? Last time I looked, he wa-, my little joy was curving goblin heads into our front door with a big knife. Very creative. Do you think you might need a dining set? I'm sorry, Hobbit, but for a moment I'm speechless. Are you trying to sell me something? Not exactly. I'm trying to be helpful. What sort of dining set? I've got, I got these forks. The rest comes in a week in installments. One silver piece for a week. These look more like rubbish that Hobson tried to sell. No offense. This is Hobson's fork. He asked me to help him out. That piece, that pieces fall into place. I thought you had more hobbit sense than this. Good enough. You go around peddling Hobson's horn, hornblower's hobby bargains. You'll soon lose your good standing in this village. This is a good job, he told me. It's a good job he to, you told me. I was about to try to sell it to Farmer Cotton. Cotton, where are you now? Let me look at this again. Let me look at that again. Do you know what? I think Hobson might accidentally give you something real valuable. The, this should go, go to someone with a big family. There is no bigger family around here than the Cottons. Why don't you go there and sell it to Farmer Cotton? Hurry along now. Oh, god. Observe. Oh, oh, yeah, let's, let's observe. Oh, what? Oh, yeah, this is Rosie. Yeah, uh, Mr. Cotton's daughter. Hello, Mr. Co-, Sandymann. I'm Rosie. How are you, my girl? You're here to buy some more flour for your father? He knows I'm the only one who can buy, he can buy it from. You must, you must hate that. Actually, no, I want to buy some flour for myself. Turning a bit cooking, are we? That's nice. How much do you need? Twenty sacks. Twenty sacks? What are you making? Actually, what do you make with flour? I... Yes, something, something evil. Pie? With twenty sacks of flour? You can't be serious. I am serious. And so is my pie. Are you sure this isn't your fa-, for your father? Alright, twenty sacks to Cotton Farm. No, no, to the Green Dragon. Hang on, little miss. If your ma, if your ma want, if your ma wanted twenty sacks of flour, she would have told your dad to get it. And he's, and he's sent you. But it's not for my ma. It's for everyone else in the Green Dragon. Everyone else? That doesn't make any sense. There's loads of hobbits in the Green Dragon. What are they going to do? Divide it all up between themselves? Of course not. They are gonna make something, make something. A pie. Just one pie. Yes. For all of them? Yes. But that pie would be enormous. Hmm? It is. That's why I need twenty sacks of flour. But, hang on. Oh, oh, I give up. Twenty sacks of flour to the Green Dragon. I'll get it there tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Sandymann. Twenty sacks of flour. Dear god, missy. That's... Wow. Oh, hello. My name's Rosie. Who are you? I'm Hugo Good Enough. You must be new hobbit people are talking about. Have you met my ma yet? Who's your ma? Lily Cotton. My daughter's Farmer Cotton. We live in the Cotton, we live at the Cotton Farm. That's easy to remember. Have met your ma. I'm sure you are, I'm sure you'll meet all of us. We cottons end up at the center of everything. I'll see you soon, Hugo. Over there. You knew, okay, yeah. Okay, you will see me soon. Village life, flower feud, two. Dun dun. Yep, I met a new townsfolk. Anything else? Let's go to Farmer Cotton then. Even though I know Mrs. Cotton would not want me to sell that fork to his husband. Well, yeah. I, I, I can't help it. It is investment. Ah, good, eat you good enough. Ah, you should see this, Farmer Cotton. Hobson Homewarmer asked me if you would like this for your home. Hobson said, did he? Let's talk about it back at the farm. No, don't, no, no, don't. Oh, hey, your wife is standing like, I'm not saying I'm going to buy it, but I am interested. You are not husband. No, you're not husband. We got enough of Hobson Homewarmer's so-called bargains around our house. Now we have it. I've put them all inside the shed. Thank you kindly, Hugo, but I don't think we need anything else. Ah, then what, what shall I do with this fork? Hobson won't be after it. He'll have another draught, draught scheme on to go by the time he comes back to Baywater. So I'll just keep the fork then? If he, if I was you, I would hang up, hang it up in my house as a reminder to not get too caught in Hobson's honey-eyed words. Actually, yeah, that... Great news for Hobson. Oh, god. Actually, that is a good idea. I'm just gonna put it on the wall, frame it down, put it on the wall, and be like, my life mistakes. That actually sounds much like, where's my home? I wanna go home. Home, yeah, it's really close by. I'm gonna go home. Actually, we're gonna go to Willow. Finally ask, can she open some doors to the future? Well, that didn't took, actually, long. We are at Willow's. Good thing that everybody lives so close. I just hope my hobbit would run a little bit faster. Can I get some boots of dexterity or something like that? Uh, Willow. Your daughter wants to talk to you. Hi, what do you want? Uh... Want to do a trade? I don't need. Yeah, ran out of luck, yeah. Uh... What do you have for sale? Yeah, you have quite things, but... I would like to actually, uh, open up some things. I think I only can open up my home when things become more available. Do you need anything? You look puzzled. You look puzzled, Daisy. Daisy. You all right, ma'am? Am I puzzled? I've got this riddle to do, and I can't do it. Uh, can I help? An eye of the lake, there stands a tree, and it, in its roots, you'll find what you seek. What do you think it means? Oh, god. Oh, it's a riddle. No, it's a reader. Nora has given it to me, and it says reader at the top. Not a riddle. Nora gave it to you? She teaches me to read and write. She said that when she was my age, old Ruby taught her to read. And Fusco, and Olo too. Now Nora, Nora's teaching me. That's very kind of Nora. Well, let me see what I can, if I can work out the answer. Okay. Yep, see you soon. No, I, I could not work with the answer. Yep, so I think it's just... Time to go and water my plants. How many hobbits do I get to invite actually on my home? Ah, do you need water? Ah, you don't. Good thing that I watered you. I watered thee. Let's take some things from the pantry. Uh, yeah, one of those beef, uh, one of those. Okay, my backpack is full. Let's start cooking. I can't make anything. I need fish and potatoes. Can I just mishmash everything together? Oh, no. Really? Well, I have fish. Uh, I need that away. Um... Can I just... Trash? Yeah, let's trash that. And let's take some fish, chicken. Yeah, I don't have potatoes. Darn it. That's a, a milk. Panel. Ah... Well, I have some fish cakes. That's a good thing. Let's see if I can make anything by, of course I can't because I'm... I need potatoes. I need... Raw bar and I need onion and potato. I need vegetables and mushroom. Oh, god. Why there is not a like, hey, just try new things? Now, let's go and buy some onions. That, that, that really bugs me. There is no like, hey, why don't you just... Why can't you just mix everything up? I think I need to sell some stuff because my backpack is really, is really full. Hey, there. Uh, sale. Yeah, I need to sell some... Uh, sell one. There we go. Three, no, I meant to... Purchase. Do you have seeds? Shallot onion seeds. Actually, I'm gonna take one of these. I'll take one of those tomatoes also. So you don't sell like, you sell only seeds. You don't sell anything else. Goddammit. There we go. That guy sells some. You sell, there we go, you sell some. Ooh, what do I want? I need sell items. What can I sell? Actually, I can ' t sell anything. Oh god, this turns into a nightmare. I need to go and empty my backpack. I ' ll be, I ' ll be right back. Alright, now that my backpack is fully empty, let ' s try this again. Yeah, I need cream. Yeah, let ' s take that also. Oh, and I ' m out of money. Sheesh. Well, have to start somewhere because I kinda need stuff to. I still need potatoes. Ah, I don ' t have money. God damn it. I don ' t have potato seeds. Which is pretty annoying that you can ' t plant potatoes. You just can ' t plant potatoes because the game doesn ' t love it. Hey guys, doing well? Yep, they are doing well. Okay, let ' s see now. Uh, I ' ll take that, that, and that. Egg, milk, honeycomb. I think I need, I still need something. Let ' s see. Can I, I can ' t cook anything because I I need onion. I didn ' t have onion. I need flour and stone lark. I can get that. I don ' t have cucumber and baby marrow. I don ' t have sparrow cabbage sprouts or eggplant. I need oats. I don ' t have money for oats. Good actually. Yeah. Well, this turned into a different episode. I need a better backpack. God damn it. I know where to get stone lark, so I can actually fish some of it. I ' m sorry this turned into a, I thought I had all the stuff that I needed. So yeah. Uh, nope. T for wheel. Beginner rod. Come on, fishy. Come on. That ' s ruffle. That ' s. Oh. That was not the fish that I was seeking. Fish. Uh. Where are you? It was some lark that I needed. Old Ruby ' s pond is over here. So it ' s just not over here yet. Just fish everything. There we go. Keep. I ' m just gonna fish every every fish that I I see. Cause that is the way. There we go. Yep. Come on, come on. Ah, you piece of poops. Yep, I ' m extinct. Getting everything extinct. No, I am going to go to the other place now, even though the old man doesn ' t want me there. So. Or maybe here could be some fishy fishes. No, too shallow. Ah, but here we see fishy fishes. Ah. That was the same fish that I had. I got got caught just a moment ago. Same fish. Actually, yeah, if this place gives me same fish, then I ' m going to go over here and see if I can get some other fishes. I ' ve never been over here actually. Get some of these. Hops. That ' s a new vegetable. Why do I have a feeling that I can ' t go over there? Getting those hops. Fishy? Any fishy over here? Hugo wants to fishy fishy. There, fishy fishy fishy. Okay. Hugo wants to fish some fishy fishes. That totally did not go where I wanted to go. Fishy? Big lake, big fishy. No butrooms, wild beef. Oh fish. And I think that ' s a beaver ' s beaver ' s nest. That is also a place where you can, I think, hold up a meal with friends. But the bridge is broken. Yep. So where do you go to go? Oh, over here. Ah. Over here, eh? And it ' s closed. God darn it. Ah, game. Why do you make things hard? I know it ' s only that I I just needed to progress time. So it ' s evening and then late night and I think I ' m gonna sleep in a bit. Never tried that. It ' s only just, oh, you might slip in. Oh, don ' t care. I ' m a hobbit. I like sleeping. Old nukes, pond. No fishes. All the fishes went to sleep. God damn it. Well then. I ' ll see you when I get back to my own hobbit hole. And I think that ' s gonna be a good place to stop this episode. Ah. Yeah, we are not home yet. I fished a couple of fishes and. Oh, pepper was. Or what is it? When I saw this glimmer. Stone bridge. You don ' t see many of them in the Shire. Made by dwarves? No. That stone looks old. Old as a mountain, as old as mountain rocks. Imagine the story it could tell. Travels travels it all the time, across the time, all across the time, blah blah blah. I wonder if it ' s made by a dwarf. Why everything is made by dwarves? I mean, yeah, dwarves were the like the blacksmith of the genius rocket scientists of the whole ages because they were totally mad of trying to come up with stuff that helped them to get more, ah, more gold. Well, yeah. Just gonna keep these fishes in my pocket and. Do you now need water? No, you ' re still okay. Good. You ' re still okay. Good, good. One day. I ' m just gonna keep these fishes in my pocket and let them smell. Let them smell. Let ' s see. Sleepy sleepy. What the fuck? That was my, that bones hitting on my chair. Let us squeak. Oh, and they also. I was like, why the game was so quiet? My headphones were just totally. No friendship recipes. Okay, well, I have so much. There we go. Fifty five out of five hundred or a hundred, I think. Ah, let ' s see on the postbox. What adventures do we have? Ah, sorting out clubs. Fork line discon- discontinuous. Oh, I need to read this. Hugo, unfortunately, the dwarven fork line has been discontinued. No way. This quick note is to tell you how much I enjoyed our business partnership and that I operate a non refund policy. P S. You can keep the fork. That that we all foreshadowed this. We, everybody foreshadowed this. What you. Hello Hugo, did you sleep well? When you have a moment, come down to the shop. Vasco and I are quite keen to get these clubs started. We want you involved. Oh god, well, okay. Let ' s do that and then we shall see if that ' s gonna be a good place to end the episode. Oh my god, this is a weed. Well, actually, since it grows like a weed, why don ' t I sell it? I can make a couple of coins out of this. Cause I have that. My my pantry is just filling out with this honeywort, with this mustard. Hinge mustard. Yeah, this fricking weed crap. And pepper was. Oh, there ' s not a pepper was. Oh yeah, let ' s go and sell this to somebody who cares. Is that person waiting for something? Because I still have the package. Okay, now he ' s, she ' s just glitching out. Uh, hmm. You might be interested about spices? No, yeah, fortune too, yeah. Let ' s go with that. And pepper worth. Twelve. Well, that ' s a good sell. Can I purchase anything? Ooh, one of those and you. I need taters. I need brown tater seeds. Now I need more money. Brown shopping ho. Hugo, good enough. I was saying that there is no finer hobbit. Finer hobbit to get to the Baywater Village Clubs up and running. Thank you. So, where you ' re gonna going to start? How about a foraging car club? Hmm. That ' ll be Delphi, I suppose. It should be, but you know Delphi. She thinks no one would want to learn from her. I want to learn from her. I do too. She understands land better than anyone. I want to for, I want, and I want to forage more than plants. Land around here must be full of mat- matthams. Oh, no you don ' t. You cluttered up our place enough with useless objects. Of course they useless. That ' s what the mattham is. And why shouldn ' t we collect them? There was a whole mattham house in Mitchell ' s, Mitchell Delving. That ' s the best place for them. Hugo, in Mitchell Delving. Not our, not our shop. There is a shiny metals metal shirt. There is a shiny metal shirt in the mattham house. Mister Baggins, Baggins? Oh. You ' re you ' re talking about Bilbo. Okay, Mister Baggins bought it back from his adventures. I used to sit and listen to his stories about trolls, dragons, and dwarven treasure. I like Mister Baggins. Any hobbit with such fine taste in waistcoats, waistcoats win my approval. But I wish he hadn ' t failed Nora ' s young head with such manifold fan- fanciful notions. You, I promise you, I will, I will only forge for food. I will not search for matthams. I definitely will. You should get another hobbit to join the foraging club, Hugo. It would encourage Delphi. That ' s a good idea. How about Daisy? She always keen to have a little adventure. She ' s a little young, so. Are you sure? Are you sure? Quite so. It must be, must be her true heritage. Always been odd, those folks. Those folk. Seems like they can never sit still. And Willow might appreciate bringing her back, you know, bringing her back dinner once in a while. As soon as you ever see, as soon as you see her, we ' ll go and visit Delphi together. Okay, that ' s actually good. Good thing, good thing. So, I ' m gonna go back to my lovely little home. And let ' s see, let ' s see now. Uh. Ask Daisy before it can start. Uh, yeah, we need to go and ask Daisy. That ' s gonna be a thing that we ' re gonna do. That is gonna be a thing we are going to do. So hopefully when I save, because couple of time, one time when I started the game and I just quit everything, it didn ' t save properly. So, now that we are here, and also I need to water my plants, cause I know I ' m gonna forget about that. So I ' m just gonna do this before we end everything. We just bomb nuke on Baywater. We ' re gonna end everything. My corn is, oh, my lovely tomatoes. Actually, I can harvest them. Oh, good. So those, they ' re growing. Cool. Oh, cool. Really cool. Nice, nice. I love it. But then mazes are gone once you take them. Oh, that. I think that ' s kind of what it is. That ' s why potatoes are also, taters are also like, like that. Baby marrow and cucumber. Oh, good. So, um. How did I harvest again? So seed bag. Uh, let ' s put some potatoes. Oh yeah, you you guys don ' t like each other. Ah, tomato. There we go. Oh. Uh, tomato, there we go. Uh. You can go over there, what about, oh, you need your own grow bed. Ah, damn it. Dammit, I need another grow bed. I don't have money to buy a new grow bed. Hmm, darn it. Actually, there was a space. I think. Come on, no. No. Harvest beans. Well, that's all the things that we got on this episode. Here we go, here, here, here we go, here we go. Come on, come on, look over here. Well, that's all the thing, all the time that I have on this episode. Thank you everybody so much for watching. Leave a like and subscribe to the channel. See what other, uh, other stuff I have on the channel. I know it's been a little while since I haven't done any videos or like any live streams. I'm sorry, but real life keeps me busy and my schedule's been really effed up. Well, yeah, being, trying to do this hobby, also keeping up on this hobby and also try to do stuff in real life, it's, um, you kind of have to do priorities. But thank you so much. Leave a like and why didn't you tell me about this game? Just comment down on below, even though just say hi or first or something. It really makes this video go, it might help on the algorithm and also keep, give a little traction to this video and this channel. But without further ado, I'll see you all in the next video on live stream. Take care and bye bye!